Today, and we hope that we can cover all of the information that you are looking for. Following the regular meeting, and that's when we vote for or against, will be a briefing session for the October 7th Board meeting, and we will not be voting on that particular. So when this first session, which is the official voting session for the commissioners, comes to a close, we will take about a 10-minute break, and then come back for the briefing. I know we have one individual here, maybe more than that, who's interested in one of the items on the agenda, and that has to do with the turkey shoot. It will be briefed today, but we will not vote on that until probably October 7th. I just want to make that announcement so you wouldn't have to spend unnecessary hours or minutes here, but we're just delighted that you are here. Citizens who are interested in participating in the public session portion of this meeting will be asked to call a number, and when you call that number, you will be placed on hold until the public session begins. Public session won't be too far from where we are right now. We'll allocate 30 minutes for it, and each individual who signs up to speak on whatever subject you have on your mind will have a total of three minutes, three minutes, to make your case for or against whatever problem, need, or interests that you're involved with. I will be the timekeeper, and if you look to my right and your left, you'll see Ashley Sloop, who the commissioners just couldn't do it without her, and she is going to be in the same position where the people who want to speak are concerned, because as the clerk to the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, if you want to speak to us live and in living color here in government center, or if you want to call us, you need to have some opportunity to make that announce to us, and for those of you in the meeting who would like to speak to all the commissioners behind the podium here, you need to fill out a card for speaking. It's in the lobby, or if you want to, you can go out and pick it up right now, it's out there, and all we need is the basic information on the card, and it shouldn't take you too long, and when you come in, just take the card directly to Ashley Sloop, and she will lovingly take it out of your hands, and you won't have a thing to worry about. You can say anything you want. Once again, we're just delighted you're here. Now, the telephone number for those who want to call in on Channel 13, and this is on cable Channel 13, the number is 336-422-1200. I'll repeat that number, 336-422-1200. You'll be placed on hold until the public session begins, and that's probably about 20 minutes from now. Members of the audience in this particular room who are interested in participating in the public session, once again, we would like to have you get a card, it's in the lobby, take it to Ashley Sloop, completed, and we'll go from there. We'll begin our meeting today with an invocation from Pastor Robert Hutchins of Meadowview Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led today by Commissioner Richard Linville. Please stand if you can.
Wanted to mention for our prayer that our church is having a day of prayer today. First person began praying at 5:00 this morning. We'll be praying for an hour each person up till about midnight tonight. We're praying for y'all. Lord, we're so thankful, before we begin this meeting, that we can pause before you and acknowledge you as our Creator. Lord, we would not be here without you. We cannot even breathe. We can't even walk without you holding our hand, dear Lord. Lord, I think about the foundation of Forsyth County, the towns of Winston and Salem, dear God. It was a God-fearing people. It was a people that acknowledged your Son as the only Lord and Savior. Lord, we have a foundation in this county that has led us to have institutions such as Baptist Hospital. We've seen, Lord, law enforcement through the years protect our people. Lord, we've seen many injustices. We understand, and dear God, we've asked you to forgive us of those, and even today we know that gangs and crime is working against our law enforcement. But dear God, we've got so much business as this county to bring before you. Lord, our school system, each and every principal, each and every assistant principal, every teacher. Lord, the wake-up call we had just recently about the shooting, dear God, Lord, we're just so glad it was not worse than it was. Lord, I'm no expert, but it seems like it was just one person was singled out instead of it being a school shooting, as we've seen across the country. Dear God, we grieve for that one loss of life, but we're so thankful it wasn't worse. We pray for wisdom as the schools conduct the business of teaching the children, as this county conducts their business today, dear God. I pray that every one of these commissioners would look to you for wisdom. Dear God, we just pray for our law enforcement, our Forsyth County Sheriff's deputies, Lord, Sheriff Kimbrough, our Winston Police Department, Lord, our paramedics, firefighters, Lord, there's just so much at work that we need to bring before you. Lord, again, we think about our hospitals, Lord, nursing homes, Lord, rehab centers. Lord, there's people out here in serious need in intensive care units, and Lord, you give us the right mind and the help to be here today. And I do pray that you would bless this meeting today, that each one would realize that they're doing the business of the people of this county, that they wouldn't bring anyone's personal agenda to this meeting, but they would come what's best in front of you, our Creator, to represent these people. So dear God, we thank you, as we can give a pledge today for this nation that is under God. Thank you again for your Son Jesus loving us and carrying our sins to the cross of Calvary, his death-bearing resurrection. Lord, where would we be without you? Thank you for this opportunity to meet in person today. We pray it can continue, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Once again, I'd like to thank the Reverend Robert Hutchins of Meadowview Baptist Church for today's invocation. Next, we're going to begin the meeting with some information that most of us, if not all of us, really take an interest in, and we've gotten to the point where this is a regular feature of our meeting. We're going to switch now to Joshua Swift. He is the Public Health Director for Forsyth County, and Mr. Swift will be giving a COVID update. Mr. Swift, you're on.
Yes, good afternoon, Chairman. Waiting for my presentation to come up. All right, I hope you can see it now. Our COVID update, we had 219 cases of COVID-19 today. 14-day total is now 2,902 cases, so our average cases per day is 207. Percent positive is 13.2 as of today. Over the course of the pandemic, we've had 485 deaths, but I want to draw your attention to the fact that over the last 30 days, we have had 48 deaths. That is something that we are paying attention to. As the cases have went up, usually a lagging indicator afterwards is that our deaths go Percent positive over time, you can see since the beginning of May, you can see that we hit a high of 14.4. This is a weekly rate. We had a dip last week, but now it has went back up to 14%. Our cases per week, you can see that number, we reached a high of over 1,500. Now it has went down to 1,274. We hope that is a trend that continues, although I do have some forecasting data and a graph I'll show you a little bit later, that we got here really quickly. Our cases went up drastically. I'm concerned that it's going to stay at a higher level. To put things into perspective, we had over 5,000 cases for the month of August. Our highest caseload was in January when we had 5,600 cases. So we were almost, we were close to that, about 5,200 cases for the month of August. So we're monitoring that throughout the month of September. Pediatric COVID cases, we're at roughly around now 28% of our cases are zero to 17 years of age, so that's sort of the norm right now, although 822 to 828, we were at 20% of cases were zero to 17, 29% the week after that, 829 to 94. This most recent week, we're at around 28%, 20%. Over the course of the pandemic, as a total, our cases for zero to 17 have been 15% of our cases have been in that age group. This next slide is one you've seen before with updated numbers. 69% of Forsyth County adults now are partially vaccinated, adults 18 and over, and 64% of adults 18 and over are fully vaccinated. You can see the breakdown by race and by age. As you see, you're starting to, the numbers, especially the younger numbers are continuing to go up. 45% of 12- to 17-year-olds have gotten at least one dose, and 54% of 18- to 24-year-olds have gotten at least one dose. This next slide is the one I was referring to, basically looking at, this is across the state, looking at where we were, and you can see that peak that we had in January, late December, early January across the state. It was the same here. Then we reached the low in July, and then we went up drastically, and basically where we are now is we're at that mid-January mark. We're basically on 9/16, where our case counts per day are about what we were at in January 16. So we're about the same place we were, and as I said before, if you see that number, the middle line going forward through October, November, and December, it looks like it's going to just gradually go down, but not drastically. It looks like we're hitting a plateau where we're going to stay at. Hopefully it won't go up, but it looks like we're going to unfortunately not go down quickly. And the last slide I have is regarding boosters. This is something that's been in the news. We've been talking about this for several weeks now. The FDA has a meeting tomorrow, and then we know that the ACIP, which is the CDC's Advisory Committee Regarding Immunizations, will be meeting the 22nd and the 23rd with possible clinical recommendations for booster doses for the general population. We have been doing boosters, or a third dose, as it's called, for the immunocompromised for almost, or over a month now, based on CDC and ACIP recommendations. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take questions. Before I take questions, just also, again, the staff, for 18 months now, I really want to thank again the public health staff and all the partners, county partners, city partners, emergency management hospitals that have been working tirelessly now for 18 months.
You sure earned your money. Everybody's working day and night, seven days a week, and we have an opportunity, commissioners, to place some comments or questions before Mr. Swift. Do we have any?
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
Joshua, how are, how are...
Excuse me.
I can't hear the question.
Can you hear me now? Can you tell me how are vaccinations going in schools? Are we still doing school day, you know, school-level vaccinations for the sixth through, I mean, the sixth graders through 12th graders, those 12 to 18?
We did have vaccine events through the summer in the schools, and this, I believe it's this weekend, we have especially a back-to-school event for not only COVID-19 vaccinations for children that are eligible, but also for kindergartners and 7th graders and 12th graders, those state-mandated vaccines. We have a clinic available for those ages as well.
So, but not scheduled for during the school day, for example?
At this point, we don't have any right now for in the schools. No, sir.
Additional questions or comments?
Chairman, I do. Joshua, thank you and all the partners and everyone involved for the last 18 months. I definitely know that this has been a lot of turmoil in our communities, and we are trying to turn the curve on this. What I wanted to know, and this is one of the questions that I probably should have alluded to even more last week relative to the gift cards. It appears that for the unvaccinated, it is helping those individuals get vaccinated. I thought that we were giving $50 for the first vaccination and then a $50 gift card for the second vaccination, and if that's not so, could you tell me how that's being allocated, the gift cards are being allocated?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner McDaniel. The vaccine gift cards are from the federal government through the state, and the state has told us we have to give out $100 for the first dose for individuals that are 18 and over, and a $25 gift card is available for someone who transports someone to get the vaccine.
So there's no incentive in terms of coming back for the second vaccination?
There is no gift card incentive, and I understand where you're coming from. If I could have wrote this system, I think it would have been wise to have had a half for the first dose and the other half for the second dose.
I would agree.
But this was a...
So are there any plans to reach back to those individuals that may not be coming back for the second vaccination? Could you hear me?
Well, I mean, we do have, we have seen quite a few individuals come back just recently, and we do have, I had to check with my team about the methods as far as CBMF. They should be able to, if they've given us a phone number or email, to be contacted with a reminder through the state system.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Joshua, thank you as always for a comprehensive report. My concern is simply the unvaccinated population, and in one of his papers, it talks about four additional deaths in Forsyth County. Were those deaths in the unvaccinated population, does that a trend also in Forsyth County in general, because I know it's a national trend?
Yeah, I mean, what we are seeing, one, basically what it gets down to is around 80% of cases now, just cases are unvaccinated, so 20% are roughly breakthrough, that's across the state, but then when it gets to hospitalizations, it's much more rare, 95% are unvaccinated, and it's even more higher, like 98, 99% when it gets to ICU and unfortunately death. I don't have the numbers in front of me for how many of our deaths have been breakthroughs out of that 485. I do not have that number in front of me.
Additional questions? Joshua Swift, thank you again for your time and your patience. This is a good report. Appreciate it. Gloria Wizenhut, County Commissioner, and Ted Kaplan, County Commissioner, as you can see, are not with us today. Ms. Wizenhut is on vacation, and today is Shom Kafur, and Mr. Kaplan is observing that. Chris Murphy, if you could come up and take your place, he's going to begin a public hearing on the zoning petition of Mark Thompson, Shelton Shehan, rather, on zoning docket number F-1604, and set forth for Agenda Item Number One. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Chairman and Board. This is a zoning case, Case F-1604, for a 61.22-acre tract of property located at the western terminus of Fieldmont Manor Drive. This is a general use zoning request from RS30S and AG back to AG. This is the subject property highlighted there in the growth management area for future growth area, land use classification on the legacy growth management area plan. This is the subject property highlighted in yellow. It is located, again, at the western terminus of Fieldmont Drive. This was originally part of the Hawksnest development that was approved by the commissioners back in the mid-2000s. Same property highlighted on the countywide aerial photography. This is a image of the subject property taken from Fieldmont Manor Drive looking west. The subject property is the vacant property off the edge of the street there. This is the subject property, again, a little bit closer on Fieldmont Manor Drive, looking again to the west. You'll see the rezoning sign located there at the western terminus of the street. This is the area plan map. The area plan supports the request. This is both a mixture of low-density residential and large-lot residential. The subject property is being requested to revert back to AG as the property is no longer under development. In summary, F-1604, the request is consistent with the Tobacaville area plan update. The request would generate fewer trips per day than expected under the existing RS20S zoning. The request is consistent with the AG district purpose statement. This item was considered at the August 12th Planning Board meeting during their public hearing. There was no one that spoke in opposition, and the Planning Board did recommend unanimously for approval of this request, and with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments for Mr. Murphy?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. Just for the benefit of the general public, would you explain how the area plans are developed and when?
Well, the area plan process is outgrowth of Legacy and the Legacy 2030 update, and there's a countywide growth management area plan, and the growth management areas looks, it looks big-picture-wise as far as what anticipated growth is for the county, and it takes into account property that's sewed. The county itself is divided into 17 or 18 different area plans, and the Planning Development Services staff worked with residents of each of those areas over the course of the last 22 years to develop those area plans, and Tobacaville Plan was one of those that we actually worked with the village of Tobacaville on separately from that process, but essentially, you know, the small towns can do their own plans as well. So anyway, that was, that's kind of the general nature of the area plan, but it just kind of sets a blueprint of future growth for the area.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Murphy. This is a public hearing, and speakers will have up to 15 minutes to speak in favor of the request, and up to 15 minutes to speak in opposition to the request. And when you stand in front of the podium, all you have to do is remember you have a total individually of three minutes, and I will keep the time on that. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the request? and I will keep the time on that. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the request? Do we have anyone who will speak in opposition to the request? If not, I will declare the public hearing closed. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to move that the zoning map amendment F-1604 be approved on the basis of the following. The proposed general, the proposed general use zoning map amendment as petitioned by Mark Thompson Sheehan to rezone 61.22 acre property from RS30S and agriculture to agriculture-only 40,000 square foot minimum lot size is consistent with the recommendations of the legacy comprehensive plan and is reasonable or in the public interest because, one, the subject property located in the western end of Fieldmont Manor Drive in Tobacaville is heavily wooded, underdeveloped, and adjacent to property, excuse me, property zoned AG and RS30S, with adjacent uses being agriculture and large lot residential. Two, the AG zoning is intended for agriculture uses and single-family houses on large lots and growth management areas four and five. Three, the subject property is located in growth management area four, which is consistent with AG zoning and is surrounded on three sides with properties zoned AG. And the proposed AG zoning would allow less intense development than the current zoning and would be consistent with the Tobacaville area plan update.
Motion made by Commissioner Don Martin, second by Commissioner Fleming Elamene. Further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting abandonment of a portion of Copeland Road from the North Carolina State-maintained mandatory road system. Discussion? If not, do I hear a motion?
Approved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Don Martin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming Elamene. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, approval of minutes for the meeting of September 2nd, 2021. Motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamene.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now comes time that we all enjoy a three-minute limit on each individual. But we introduce Ashley Sloop. Ms. Sloop is our clerk to the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, and I'll turn the meeting over to you. Do we have any on the phone right now?
Mr. Chairman, we have two callers and seven folks present who would like to speak today.
Public session is all yours.
Okay. Would you like to start with the phone calls first?
Sure.
You are now available.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' public session line. The session is for comments only and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Joy Williams, 5059 Butterfield Drive, Winston-Salem, 27105.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
I have a prayer to offer. I am profoundly, profoundly touched by the effort of the county to help those most vulnerable. From the ARPA commitment to the compliance webinar held by Cal Hany and Ayesha Carter this past Tuesday, to the many community folks working tirelessly, such as those that are running a pantry without me because of my physical condition today. This is my prayer for the world. A prayer for the world starts with a prayer for me. A prayer that will make my heart supple to the move of God and sensitive to the cries and needs of His creation. A prayer for the world starts with a prayer for me and a prayer for you. A prayer that will make your ears keen to the words of love, peace, and joy that will settle in your heart, moving us and sink to the cries and needs of His creation. A prayer for the world starts with a prayer for me, a prayer for you, and a prayer for our community. A prayer that will move our community to all come together, families, lovers, friends, and neighbors, working to heal the cries and needs of His creation. A prayer for the world starts with a prayer for me, a prayer for you, a prayer for our community, and a prayer for our government. A prayer that will instill the heavenly grace into the words of Chairman Plyler. A prayer that will recognize the devotion of Clerk Ashley Sloop and of Deputy Clerk Rosalyn Covington. A prayer that would infuse the perfect wisdom to sink into the dreams of County Manager Dudley Watts Jr. and to the morning yawns of Deputy County Manager Damon L. Sanders Pratt and Chantel A. Robinson, guiding them in the supervision of the county's affairs. A prayer that will help the Board of Commissioners lead the county with fierce integrity and unyielding compassion over policies, taxes, budgets, and zoning. A prayer that will offer divine protection and power over Commissioner McDaniel. Deep courage and wonderful health over Commissioner Elamene. A holy, zealous spirit over Commissioner Linville. A solid heart of truth over Commissioner Martin. A persuasive imagination over Commissioner Wizenhunt. And a deep yearning of unity over Commissioner Kaplan. A prayer for our world starts with a prayer for me, a prayer for you, a prayer for our community, and a prayer for our government to respond together to the cries and needs of His creation with love, mercy, justice, and walking humbly before the Lord. And may we respond together. In Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Very good.
You are now available.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' public session line. The session is for comments only and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
You are now available.
Suzy Stany, 7020 Landville Court, Clemmons, North Carolina.
Please mute your volume. Set your main. Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Good afternoon. I am calling in regards to the Health and Human Services Board that you're going to be getting some recommendations for. And I'd like to recommend Emily Saunders to this board. She is an outstanding member of our community. She has been involved in health and wellness and fitness for many, many years. She has multiple businesses in health and fitness, pardon me, and fitness. She is the wife of a local physician. She has many years in service with the Salem Pregnancy Center, as well as within the community in serving the underprivileged. I have known Emily for approximately 10 years, and I can say without a doubt, she will go above and beyond to help our community and maintain a, pardon me, and just help research and do what's right for our community of Forsyth County.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we have seven speakers here.
Good.
Linda Turley, will you please come forward? State your name and address for the record when you get to the microphone.
It's good to have you with us. Thank you for coming.
Hi, my name is Linda Turley, and I live at 3438 Tanglebrook Trail. I'm here today representing Save Tanglewood. Save Tanglewood is a coalition of Forsyth County residents and other concerned citizens opposed to the siding of an event center anywhere within Tanglewood Park. On July 22nd, Save Tanglewood opened an online petition against Tanglewood Event Center. To date, this petition has garnered over 1,600 signatures, and the printed version, which I will present to your clerk today, runs 130 pages. Among the over 600 comments, you will note several reoccurring themes, including concerns that an event center in Tanglewood Park will spoil the natural beauty of the park, impair recreational users' enjoyment of the park, and destroy wildlife habitat; consume limited county financial resources with little hope of returning the investment or break even; potentially endanger or displace the park's current horse population; contribute to stormwater runoff and flooding within the park and surrounding neighborhoods; and contribute to traffic congestions within the community. Honorable commissioners, I thank you for your service to the people of Forsyth County and request that you thoughtfully consider the petitions of your constituents in this matter. An online version of the petition can be found at ipetitions.com/petition/nueventcenter. And then just a really quick personal comment that's not related to the petition. Mr. Watts, during the August 4th meeting, I told you that there was a Facebook post asking, and quote unquote, "If you had to spend $5 million on Tanglewood, what would you spend it on?" And you told me to send it to you because you'd love to see the list. Well, I have copies for everybody. As a disclaimer, I copied and pasted all that was posted on the Facebook page, but I did delete people's names because I didn't feel right in sharing their names without their permission. But I assure you, it is all there. Please take a look at all these positive, less invasive ideas that come from the residents that you have sworn to represent. Please spread this money around at other county parks, or better yet, spend this on more important things that our county needs: teachers, police, school security, road repairs, storm, storm management, and the list goes on. As a society, we seem to value all the things that make money: oil, timber, minerals, businesses, housing, but not the value of unspoiled beauty, wildlife solitude, and spiritual renewal. And I'll leave you with one very interesting fact. Back in 1937, remaining wilderness on earth was at 66%. Last year, in 2020, it was down to 35%. The earth is generous only if respected and treated with care. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You may be interested in knowing. Survey on your subject will be announced by our county manager as soon as we finish the public session and this briefing.
Okay, thank you. And here is the petition and then the...
Okay. Just hand that to the clerk. Appreciate it very much.
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker is Sarah Hines. Please come forward and state your address for the record.
It's good to have you with us, Ms. Hines.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Hines. I live at 1447 West Fourth Street. Good afternoon, commissioners. I am Sarah Hines, and I am speaking on behalf of the Unity Wellness Center, Winston-Salem. It is with an extremely heavy heart, surrounded by escalating and continuing community violence that recently spilled over onto Mount Taber High School campus on September 1st that I speak with you about today. As you are all well aware, this tragedy is yet another reminder of just how deeply our youth are hurting. We all know that untreated pain, desperation, and hopelessness feed into the cycles of trauma and violence. We also understand that the root cause of violence is disparity and trauma. And we also know that there are tremendous gaps in compassionate and accessible mental health services for our most vulnerable and historically marginalized communities. The reality is that it is extremely difficult for many, if not most, of our families to access mental health services for their children. And this is only compounding the suffering of our children and their families. We need to approach community violence like the public health threat that it is, and start by acknowledging that, acknowledging the role that longstanding systemic and structural inequalities are playing in the escalating violence and worsening mental health of our youth. Make no mistake, COVID-19 has only worsened pre-existing physical and mental health disparities within our communities. So it makes sense that mounting hopelessness, despair, and suffering are contributing factors to the violence that many of us see, hear, witness, and experience every day in our communities. Our youth are crying out for help, and we need to respond quickly, compassionately, and with new strategies that center their voices and their lived experiences in the healing process. Community-based organizations such as mine, the Unity Wellness Center of Winston-Salem, and other grassroots organizations can successfully reduce violence by implementing innovative, alternative, evidence-based violence intervention measures that are community-driven and data-informed.
30 seconds.
Forsyth County, I am respectfully requesting that you award American Rescue Plan funds to fund innovative transformative violence disruption programs, such as those offered by the Unity Wellness Center and other violence intervention programs, including street outreach, group violence intervention, and hospital-based violence intervention programs. I am asking that you support these initiatives. We hope that you see the value we offer to this community, and we look forward to partnering with each of you to make our communities safer, happier, healthier, and more equitable. Thank you for your consideration.
Perfect three minutes, Mrs. Hines. Thank you very much.
Alan Daniel, please come forward and state your address for the record.
Welcome, Ms. Daniel. Mr. Daniel, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. I live at 100 Fernworth Court in Clemmons. These headlines come from the Winston-Salem Journal. 9/16, man dies after being shot in Winston-Salem. He was one of six people hit by gunfire in the separate shootings since last Friday. Investigators determined that Williams was shot for unknown reasons by a juvenile who fled the area. 15-year-old shooting victim in stable condition after someone fired at vehicle. He was the second teen shot in Winston-Salem on Friday. One person wounded in shooting Friday, Winston-Salem Police say. Man in critical condition after shooting in Winston-Salem, that from September 1st. August 25th, 14-year-old charged with murder. He's the second teen charged by Winston-Salem Police after a bullet came through a victim's home. April, August 22nd, man shot in the leg outside of a bar on Waltham Street. August 21st, man shot and wounded early Saturday morning at Thania Station Road. August 14th, man shot in the arm while walking in Winston-Salem Street. August 14th, two people shot overnight. August 13th, 19-year-old charged with shooting that injured girl, 12. August 12th, man, 20, hospitalized after being shot. August 11th, woman injured as suspect fires into her vehicle. August 11th, juvenile wounded in shootings early Wednesday. August 8th, woman injured. On and on. According to WXII, we've had 138 shootings in the last three months. 44 resulted in death or injury. I lay about 98% of the responsibility for this at the feet of our education system. Why? Because well-educated people do not behave that way. And by well-educated, I don't just mean reading, writing, and arithmetic. I mean mental health. Knowing how to solve your problems without violence. Knowing how to solve conflict. Knowing that no matter what, this country offers you the opportunity to be absolutely anything you want to be. So what are you all going to do about it?
30 seconds.
Here are some suggestions from a local veteran teacher. Offer every child the education guaranteed by our Constitution. Put a nurse in every public school, a reading specialist per grade in every school, a social worker in every school. Make all meals free. Invest in more professional development. Include teachers in discussions about how to improve teaching and learning. Restore graduate pay. Restore due process rights for teachers. And pass statewide school bond funding. I will submit to you the balance of my comments in an email. Thank you.
Comments were excellent, Mr. Daniel. Thank you for being here. I've been here 60 years, and I've never seen it this bad.
David Velata, please come forward and state your address for the record.
David, from a personal point of view, I think you've got a beautiful name. It's in the Bible, you know.
I'm Big Alliance.
Good to have you here.
Welcome. Thank you for having me here again. David Velata, 1411 Golson Avenue. David Velata, 1411 Golson Avenue. You guys heard me last time, I'm not sure if you guys really understood. You hear everybody here now telling you, giving you data. The streets is at an uproar. You guys are seeing the news, you guys live here. There was a meeting this week down at the church, down Emmanuel Baptist, and I seen Commissioner Fleming. And he's a witness to the city pleading the community. When I say pleading, I mean pleading from the mayor, to the sheriff, to the police department, to the school board, everybody, for the community to get involved and do their part. But we can't do our part if we don't have the resources, if we have the funding that we need. I'm here to ask, not only as New Life, New Vida, which is my organization, but also here in coalition with the Women's Gun Violence Coalition, that you guys help us and assist us with some of the funding that the American Rescue Plan funds that you guys have available. You know, this young man here just gave you all the datas and the numbers of all the crime that's going on. Well, let me give you a couple of the numbers. And I told you guys a little bit about myself last time. The police department has reported that within the last three years, in their crime, it's on their website, 2019, 20, and 21, the homicides between January and July have went from 14 to 16 to 19 this year, which right now we're at 23. But they also have their crime report, their maps, zoning and stuff like that, that on the south side of Winston-Salem, where I work most, I'm more with the Hispanic community, but I work with all, there's only been two murders in the last six months, homicides. And none of them were related to Hispanic gangs, which is, I told you guys, that I've been working with, implementing, and helping through a peace treaty. So I'm here to say that if we're able to work with them and assist them to stop, can we get the funding and assistance and the back that we can get so that we can work with the rest of the city?
Thirty seconds.
Let's not play that time stuff. I know there's more people here, but this is important. It's people's lives we're talking about. Now, ask for your respect, please.
Go right ahead.
We need your understanding. I reached out to you guys for a meeting. Only Commissioner Martin reached out to me and responded, and so did Fleming. When am I going to get my time to give you guys more reports and more time of what's really going on? When are you guys going to start listening and understanding that this is serious? When it touches your community? When it touches your family? That's not right. We're here to work. We're here to provide a service, help us and assist us, please. Otherwise, like the sheriff said, get out the way and let us do our job.
Thank you, David.
Dr. Linda McRae, please come forward and state your address for the record.
Welcome to the Commissioners' Meeting. Good to have you with us.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. I am honored to be able to come before you just to present my address as 5016 Pressman. But my business address, which I want to talk about today, is right downtown, 326 North Spring Street, right downtown. So I want to talk about HOPE, HOPE Counseling and Consulting Services, to introduce to you the Board members. We've been now, this month, eight years in the community, providing a full range of behavioral health services. And I'm so excited to have an awesome staff that we absolutely love the work that we're providing. We provide substance use disorder treatment, and that's a full range, as well as all behavioral health and mental health services. We also have a nurse practitioner onboard so we can provide medication management as well. So when I, HOPE, the acronym stands for Healing Our People and Environment. I believe that if we can heal the people, we can heal our environment. And some of the comments that have been made today is evident of the need of, and what we see happening, is evident of the need of good services, services that for many have not been accessed, be that they could not afford it, they didn't have insurance, what have you, or even just feeling like they couldn't make the connections. And so we are excited. The Monday before the shooting, we had received notification that we are now providers in the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System, and we're excited about that. But because of the shooting, of course, things now have kind of come to a halt, and we're waiting to hear what the process is. But we are currently in, a couple of our charter schools, providing services, social, emotional, learning. Because we realize if we don't deal with how our children are feeling and what's happening with them, and address some of their core issues, they're not going to perform well in the classroom or outside of the classroom. And so I just come today to tell you, we're ready, willing, and we are able to provide the behavioral health services that we think our citizens absolutely need. And again, I think in light of what we have been experiencing, it's evident of the need. And some of the services that we are providing...
Thirty seconds.
Of course, again, substance use disorder. We're also in the courthouse, we're providing anger management, domestic violence intervention programs, so we are actually working with the courts as well, providing services for the batterers. So again, we did apply for the ARPA, and we are looking forward, hopeful, that you will see the benefit of us being granted that, that we might expand our program and services. Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you very much.
Nikita McDaniel, please come forward and state your address for the record.
Ms. McDaniel? We have a Commissioner named McDaniel.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Nikita McDaniel. My address is 3050 Bang Bridge Drive, not that far from here. I'm here today to talk to you about this problem that we've heard a few people talk about, and it is the gun violence that is ravaging through our community. I have worked in this community for nearly 15 years with grassroots groups that have been doing work and haven't been paid a dime. And they do good work. They are intervening and they are working to prevent violence. But if we don't support the work that those organizations do, they can't do that work. So at the beginning of June, I just had enough. So I called the women together. And the women said, guess what? We want to do something about it. So we started planning a comprehensive way for us to address gun violence. And we got our grassroots groups here to come together. One of the things I've heard elected officials say is, what community going to do? What community going to do? Community has come together, and community is prepared to work together. We presented a proposal underneath the Women's Gun Violence Prevention Coalition. We are working underneath the umbrella of My Brothers and Sisters Keeper, Action for Equity, who has done outstanding organizing work in our community over the last four years. They are qualified, they are not going anywhere in two years. I've been hearing people say that we can't just give our money away to people that we don't know to have sustainable programs. I know about that stuff. I've been doing this work for a long time. And that's not true. Action for Equity has been funded by some of our finest foundations here in this county, in this city. So if our foundations can put their money behind that work, then we should trust to put our money behind that work. And we should also trust our grassroots groups who do this work on the ground each and every day, to make sure that they are working to prevent gun violence. But we should not expect for them to be as successful as they could be if they are not funded.
You have 30 seconds.
I work for an organization during the day, my daytime job. I work for an organization called Every Town for Gun Safety, and we believe in evidence-based solutions. We are working with these grassroots groups, and we are also bringing together stakeholders from the community so that we can begin planning together for a comprehensive solution to end gun violence. But we're going to need your support, so I'm asking today that you would support the grassroots efforts of the groups in this community that have come together to do this work under one umbrella. We will not be separated and pieced apart. We are one group, and when you talk to one, you talk to all of us. Because we are sick and tired of gun violence in our community, and I thank you today and look forward to working with you.
Well said. Encouraging.
Daniel Kennedy, please come forward and state your address for the record.
Welcome, Mr. Kennedy.
Hello, how you doing?
Fine. Good to have you with us.
Well, with all these people have said about the gun violence, I'm a product of that environment. Mr. Ellerman, I grew up in his household playing basketball...
Really?
...on his garage. Day after day, a safe haven for me. Mr. McRae, Ms. McRae, know the struggles I've been through, and know the prayers of my mother. I've been shot, I've been out here, I've sold drugs, federal prison, I've done it all. Today I stand here, I started my own nonprofit, The Carolina Move, motivated over various extremes. The thing that this community is missing is love. And without God, nothing works. I don't care how many programs we put in place. If God ain't in it, it ain't going to work. I've applied for the city numerous to work in the Recreation Department. I coach right now, I have 25 kids on my football team. Ten of these boys spend a night at my house, single father raising two boys. Spend a night at my house every Friday night. I feed them, I make sure they got haircuts, they're clothed. I have another gentleman in the back of the room. We come from different sides of the track. We've came together for these kids, no matter how much money we have in our pocket. We make the best out of what we have. So for y'all to say, for people to say where the money is going, if your hand says no, I know God can change that for you to say yes. My fight is to get in the Recreation Department, to make a difference. Because I know the men, Art Brown, Mr. Funderburgh, who labored for me, who showed me love that I didn't have a father in the household, who helped make me the person that I am today. I've been to college. I've been to college for business administration. I've been to college for psychology. I've been also to be a personal trainer, which I have a youth training business now. It's an attachment. You can walk out this door right now, right across the bridge over here, and the community is hurting. You come on this side, it looks so glorious. Do you know what they need on that side? Are you in touch with them? Have you ever picked up a child and asked them what they need or what's wrong? No, you haven't. You couldn't answer that question, could you? Have you ever bought one of a pair of shoes whose mama can't afford it, or who strung out on drugs? Have you ever took the time it took in the church with you and showed them what love can do? Like that man said, until it hits your community, you don't care. It doesn't make a difference. You can go home and play golf. You can ride around on your Limeo with your straw hat on. Doesn't make a difference, does it? It's a war going on. And there's people here, hand and foot, that know what that war is. But you're sending money to Tanglewood, $5 million. Put that $5 million back in the Recreation Department. These kids love music these days.
Thirty seconds.
Give them an outlet, skills, training. That war don't stop until the right people do the right things. Put me in the Recreation Department. You got a man that's committed, every day. Thank you.
You did a great job. Thank you very much. Thanks for everybody supporting him.
Mr. Chairman, we have a late addition to the online calls.
Go right ahead.
Thank you for calling...
Hi.
Hi. Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. The session is for comments only and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Elizabeth Carlson. And my address is 3303 Buena Vista Road in Winston-Salem.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Yes, hi, everybody. Today, I'm honored to come before you and talk about an issue of really what I would call civics education. And it has to do with the article in the paper today, talking about drawing new district lines related to the new census numbers. So some things that weren't mentioned in the paper, I would like to just put out there for the public and in front of this distinguished group of county commissioners. Kind of the big picture umbrella is, we have these two districts. District A has two seats, and District B has four seats, and there's one at large. District A is 78% Democrat and 9% Republican, and District B, with the four seats, is 44% Democrat and 51% Republican. So in terms of the offer that was put out in the paper today, there are some precincts that can be, that could stay the same lines, or there's some precincts that can be moved over from District B to District A. And the precincts offered were 122 South Side, 59% Democrat, 61, which is 75% Democrat, 90, and, excuse me, there was 033, which is 58.7% Democrat, and then the 905, which seems to be the one that everyone wants to move over from B to A, which is 71.3% Democrat. So that will move from, into District A, more Democrats, so it will now be above 78% Democrat, and out of District B will move out some Democrats, which will make it easier for Republicans to win in District B, which has the four seats.
Thirty seconds.
So I also remember, at the last meeting, the attorney said that last census, I think it was 2011...
You have 30 seconds.
...10 precincts were moved out of District B to A. I'd like to know, not today, but at some point, if those were also Democratic precincts moved into District A. I'm concerned that we need just more education and more awareness of what these District A and District B are, and thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Loop.
Mr. Chairman, we have one additional card.
No, that's fine.
Velma, will you please come forward and state your full name and address for the
I knew one lady named Velma, now I know two.
Good afternoon. My name is Velma Terry. The organization that I work for is GUIDE, Guiding Institute for Development and Education. I'm an advocate, I've been doing this kind of work, working in Piedmont, Rolling Hills, Town View, Cleveland, any low-income community, I've been there. I've been doing this work for 20 years. I raise my children in this program. I am a survivor. My son was murdered on Valentine's Day. My son was a pillar of the community. He worked downtown CVS for 10 years. I stand before you, like I said, I work in these communities, and it is, I heard a young lady share about mental health. Yeah, there's a lot of that going around. There's a lot of that going around, and it's only by God's grace and mercy that T.O.R. Terry's mother stand here before you. Trauma. And I also heard someone said, before it hits your home. And I heard other people stand up asking for money to help in these communities. It is well needed. My son was snatched from me. I am now seeing a therapist for the trauma that I am going through. I pray that another mother does not feel what I feel. I am going through maternal disconnection right now. I have six other children. The only reason I get them is that my son left me a message... The only reason I get up is that my son left me a message on my answering service saying, Ma, get up! And this is how I make it through the day. And I still go out to these communities where they're shooting, where they're killing. I still have to be a mother to his other siblings. I still have to show up for God, I still have to show up for other people's children. Now I'm saying, who showing up for me? I've been doing community work for 20 years, who showing up for me? I heard somebody talk about love, where's the love? Where's the love? So I'm begging you to please give these monies to these people who need them, please. We need to stop the violence, for you won't have another mother come up here trying to hold on to another day. So if you don't want to feel what I feel, please give these people, the organizations, the money that they ask for, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. It's one of the most emotional, important things I've heard. And Velma, thank you. Commissioners, any comments before we move on to our regular schedule?
Mr. Chairman, could we take five minutes?
All right, we'll take five, at least five minutes recess. Our recess has come to a close. I can tell you, Commissioner Elamain, had you not called for a 10-minute refill, refill, we probably did need to refill with some calmness, but appreciate that and appreciate you, Commissioner McDaniel, going to the rescue of a mother. This has been one of the most emotional. I'm just close to it myself, but I just, I heard it, really heard it. And I think we all did. And I've done this for quite a number of years, but it certainly is the most emotional thing I've ever been involved with. I did make a comment, I normally don't make comments during the public session, but in this particular public session, when David was talking about gunshots, I can, I did say it. I can tell without hesitation or reservation, I've never seen it, guns and the type of things that the Winston-Salem Journal reports and WXII reports daily. And so this is a very timely meeting. Now, we're gonna get down to some public policy business, and that's where Dudley Watts comes in to view. He is our county manager. By the way, do you want to mention ahead of time the survey that I mentioned to the people from Clemmons?
I can, if it's the will of the board to go ahead and go through that.
A lot of this is gonna be, we've still got briefing session to go through, so.
Yeah, I had it for the very end of the briefing session, but I don't mind announcing it in the.
Okay, so you will know, we have taken a survey, Mr. Watts and his staff took a survey on the question related to the quote "event center" or the equestrian center or the whatever you want to call a 50,000-square-foot building. And what he's handing us here is a copy of the results of that survey. And it should be interesting. And oh, by the way, you noticed in the public session, you were quoted, Mr. Watts.
Sure, I think I've been quoted a lot over the last month or so, but not always in the best terms. And I certainly understand the passion that people feel around that. So what you've got in front of you is a survey that we conducted after the, we did it shortly after the second public meeting we had at Tangle, or around the Tanglewood issue. We did one out there on-site, and then we did one in this room, and it was more of a virtual meeting. And so got the survey out, got the results back, I think we closed it out on the 12th. And we really just wanted to validate, you know, kind of what we were hearing. You know, obviously, the survey results were weighted by folks, there was a lot of opposition there, and I think they had 1,600 people that had responded to the petition against it. You've got about 2,000 that responded to the survey. It was a really simple, three-question survey, the first two really are the ones that mattered the most. The first question was, are you in favor of a multi-use agricultural exposition center as it was sort of defined through the bond process? And so the results of that were 55%, roughly 54.25%, and 40 were still in favor of a facility of that type in Forsyth County. 45.75% were opposed to it. When they were asked the question, are you in favor of the multi-use agricultural exposition center being located at Tanglewood Park, obviously, the large, large majority were opposed to it, 82.81% were opposed, 17.19% were in favor of it at Tanglewood. And then we asked a question about if it was at Tanglewood, which site would you want? You know, at this point, to bring you back to, when we, when the management brought you our recommendation some time ago, the recommendation was to essentially start the design work so that we could fill in the details around what the facility would be. When the opposition came in, we stopped that process, and you know, the sideline of that was that we were gonna do that design work on that site at Tanglewood based on the presentation we did back in November, I believe, of 2020, when we presented it during that period. And that, that meeting, for whatever reason, did not get a lot of public media coverage. And so I think the folks who were concerned about it are accurate, and they were, it did not get a lot of public exposure at that time, for whatever reason. But anyway, so brought the recommendation in to move forward with that. We did the public meetings and the survey and what have you. At this point, it has not been in front of the board for a decision, but management is no longer looking at Tanglewood Park for that site. So we are looking at other, other potential sites around the county. We're gonna go back to the park property that we had, and then a few other sites have emerged, but we are back into that, back into that. So unless the board wants us to do something different, we are no longer considering Tanglewood site.
Good going, that was a wise decision.
Yeah, you got a wise decision out of Mr. Martin, and thank you from Commissioner McDaniel. I think you're on the money.
Okay.
I consider it worth it.
And we will, park staff will go ahead and, you know, we've got databases of people who have expressed concerns, and we've got those emails, so we will send something out specifically to those people who you heard from and who took the time to show up at the public meeting and what have you. And hopefully, we'll get a good, get some good coverage from the newspaper and news media around that, and we'll be following up to make sure that that happens.
That's a biggie.
All right. So that's one item, less that we've got to take care of at the briefing session, and certainly understand moving that one forward. Mr. Chairman, unless there's anything else, I'll go ahead and jump into the business items we've got for board action today. We have reviewed these in most cases at least two times in the briefing session. Hopefully, we've answered all your questions, but I'll dive into it, to those items. Agenda item four is an amendment to the 2019 PEGO Capital Projects Ordinance. It transfers residual funds to the 2018 Smith Reynolds Airport Capital Projects Ordinance for capital maintenance projects. And you've got an associated amendment that moves other money. Essentially, this reflects, this gets funds budgeted that reflects the sale of the Lansing Drive property for the Garner Foods site. It also transfers the residual balance of the matching funds for the EDA project to use for other airport purposes. And sort of the net is 1.8 million, 1.8, $1,858,756 to be used for capital projects that are already programmed into the capital improvement plan at the airport.
To move.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hold free.
All right, agenda item five is an amendment to the FY 2021, 2021, 2022 budget. It increases revenues and appropriations for the Forsyth County Department of Public Health for the women's and children's health, children's youth and branch funding. Essentially, this will allocate a large amount of money, $6,655,055. It is for school nurses and related staffing support for COVID-19 response. Now, we just need to encourage people, apply for the nursing jobs that we have. We are understaffed with school nurses, and we are working as hard as we can. You probably saw some media product that's out there, really trying to encourage folks to apply for those jobs.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Agenda item six is an amendment, 2016 Schools' Capital Projects Ordinance. It approved the authorized projects as requested by the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education. Goes all the way back to the 2016 bonds. This will appropriate $20,618,314 for North Forsyth High School. That facility needs some improvements, and I know this is gonna be well received just by way of information. We will have appropriated after this 290 of the 350 million in school bonds that were funded back in 2016.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Martin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming Elamain, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Agenda item seven is a grant matter, it's a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from Winston-Salem Foundation awarded the Forsyth County North Carolina Cooperative Extension for the expansion of community gardens in Forsyth County. It'll provide $8,000 for that purpose.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming Elamain, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Agenda item eight is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between Forsyth County and University of North Carolina School of the Arts through its spatial justice studio at the Center for Design Innovation for the development of the Neighborhood Equity Atlas project. You've heard about that project, this would provide not to exceed $107,092 for this.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamain.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Agenda item nine is a resolution authorizing the execution of a facilities use and lease agreement between Forsyth County and the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill on behalf of its School of Social Work for the lease of office and classroom space at the DSS facility to accommodate their master's and bachelor's degree programs. We've been into this arrangement with them for a fairly long time. This would provide a revenue contract not to exceed $60,750.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamain, second by Commissioner McDaniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Three property matters, item 10 is resolution authorizing the termination of the lease with Cardinal Innovations Healthcare.
To move. Motion to approve by Commissioner Don Martin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and Monarch, a service provider there at the Behavioral Health Center for the lease of county-owned property at 651 North Highland Avenue.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamain.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Don Martin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And item 12 is a resolution declaring certain county-owned personal property surplus and authorizing its disposition by public electronic auction utilizing liquidity services, which is also known as GOV deals, to encourage people to buy some of that property we no longer need.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamain.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richard Lindvall, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We have a whole bunch of appointments, so I believe.
This is it, this is where we vote again.
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You all have ballots in front of you, and there are a number of those that actually did not have any applicants, applications submitted that we will continue to a future meeting. And I thought what I might do is just, we can go, because there are several blank ones at the beginning, and we can go through these a little quicker instead of reading every one. I'll just mention the committee briefly, that we're still looking for people. I do want to say, I appreciate that we had several, a lot of interest in several of the committees that we have. And as always, I appreciate the interest that citizens express and a desire to serve on these committees, which are volunteer, which is just another way to help the community. And we have hundreds of people that do that, and we're certainly indebted to their time and good thinking and passion about these. and good thinking and passion about these topics. And we do hope that folks will, that can fill in spots in these other ones that we will, that we still have vacancies. The Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee has a couple of appointments available. Animal Services Advisory Board actually has two appointments available. The Appearance Commission in Winston-Salem Forsyth County has two appointments available. The Commission on Any Homelessness Winston-Salem Forsyth County has two appointments that are available. And the Community Child Protection Team, Child Fatality Prevention Team has one appointment available. Excuse me. Next, we had a great deal of interest in the Forsyth County Health and Human Services Board. We have two appointments to four-year terms expiring September 2025. And so there, we have, for the, we're looking for two at-large applicants here. So the incumbents wishing to serve, we have two, John Blaylock and Commissioner Alameen. And we actually have six citizens wishing to serve. Celeste Blow, Corey English, Louis Finning, Karen Mamoussa, Octavia Miller, and Emily Saunders. Please vote for two.
Mr. Chairman, John Blaylock and Commissioner Alameen received the majority vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also, on the Forsyth County Health and Human Services Board, have three appointments for four-year terms that are for designated types of positions. We have a spot for a veterinarian, a dentist, and a physician licensed to practice medicine in the state of North Carolina. We have three incumbents wishing to serve. Dr. Charles Mansler, dentist, Dr. Pete Robey, physician, and Dr. Calvert Jeffers, veterinarian. We can, since they're the only three that continue are willing to serve, I'd like to make a motion, we approve them by acclamation.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
For the Forsyth County Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Council, we actually have two appointments to two-year terms. Basically, there's no designation, so please, we have interested in serving, citizens wishing to serve, Jarius Gurley on Gwendolyn Hill and Kimberly Jackson. And please vote for two.
Mr. Chairman, Gwendolyn Hill received majority vote, but we need to do a second vote between Jarius Gurley and Kimberly Jackson.
All right. Repeat your names again, please.
Jarius Gurley, Kimberly Jackson. Mr. Chairman, Kimberly Jackson received majority vote.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We actually have a number of particular appointments available. There are four at large. We have three citizens wishing to serve in that category and we have no other applicants. I will mention that the particular designations we are, that still remain, there's a member, we need a member of the business community, the faith community, a person under 18 who's a member of the State Youth Council and a substance abuse professional. But among the three citizens wishing to serve at large, we have four slots, are Matthew Klein, Lou Baba Mitchell, and Jack Monell. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve those by acclamation.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have no applicants for the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority. And we actually have two appointments available. For the Library Board, we have two appointments to three-year terms. They're open designations. We have two incumbents wishing to serve, Gail Anderson and Mary Cameron. And we have two citizens wishing to serve, Wanda Brown and Dominique Walker. Please vote for two.
Mr. Chairman, Gail Anderson and Mary Cameron received majority vote.
Okay, thank you very much. Mary Cameron is a member of the Clemmons Village Council.
All right, next we have the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee Forsyth County. We have six appointments, but we have no applicants, so we will continue to look. For the Piedmont Triad Regional Workforce Development Board, we have one appointment to a two-year term and we have one citizen who is interested in serving, Ben Rao. And I'd like to make a motion that we appoint him by acclamation.
I will second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We also have the Utility Commission with one appointment and there are no applicants. And next, we have the Zoning Board of Adjustment Forsyth County. There's one appointment to fill the unexpired term of Robert Leek that will expire April 2023. It's a regular member. We have two citizens wishing to serve, incumbent Bertha Rothrock and a citizen wishing to serve, Philip Rector. Please vote for one.
I wonder if that Bob Leek was the Bob Leek we know.
It's, I think it's the Bob Leek we know. Who is retired from that committee.
Mr. Chairman, Bertha Rothrock received majority vote.
Thank you very much.
The last one is also in the Zoning Board of Adjustment. It is for one of, one appointment to a three-year term and it is an alternate. This is an alternate to that board. And since we had two requesting, although we didn't have another person for an alternate, perhaps we could take our second person there, which I just turned in my sheet so I don't have his name, that we could actually, if you mentioned his name, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Philip Rector.
Mr. Philip Rector, I'd like to make a motion that we approve him in the alternate position by acclamation.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I have two other, just briefly saying there are not any more appointments, but, you know, we have switched our methodology to online. Our applications have changed. By the way, it's much improved. But we had, we had a question that used to always be answered and ask you, you know, our US citizen, how many years have you lived in the United States? They ask you how many years you've lived in Forsyth County. And then it used to ask, you know, what municipality do you live in? Do you live in Forsyth County or municipality? And if you say municipality, it asks you which one. And I'd like to request that we add that back and be a part of our application because I think it's important to know sometimes that people live only in the county unincorporated, to know that we have people either in Kernsville or Clemmons or Winston-Salem. And it's helpful to know that municipality. So I'd like to ask that we include that formally in our application.
I would agree with that because I've had some people say, we need representation from our communities.
And the second part was, we used, most of the time, there's a resume attached, you know? Well, a lot of times now that they're filled out online, there is no resume attached. And there were several this time, it would have been very helpful to have had the resume. And I'd like to ask that we just have a work experience, a resume. It's like an open-ended, just say, tell us kind of what you do. That's really what I'm interested in. And that's been volunteered before. And now that we're doing this online, I'd like to ask that we request it so that we have that information when we look at these.
Any comments on Commissioner Martin's suggestion?
I like the suggestion. However, I just want to make sure that our decision-making isn't around that it's a requirement. If they don't have it, and are you looking for work experience versus community service experience?
Well, it's both, actually they're both on there. What we used to have was community experience and work experience. And a lot, because I don't think everybody organized, we had a lot of attachments that had that. And I would love to see community experience and work experience. And thanks for mentioning that.
You're welcome.
Because that, we used to get both of those. Because sometimes someone works as something totally different, but their passion is about what they're applying for and they've had many years of service in that. Thank you for, thank you for mentioning that. And if there's no objection, I'd like to put that in form of a motion to make those two changes. Kind of add that resume with current expense, I mean, current experience and community experience, community involvement, and also to add the municipality.
Question? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming-Alamine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We've got two, two reports. You've got item 27, the Tax Assessor Collector's Refund under $100. And then you've got August 2021 Contribution-Based Benefit Cap Report.
Motion to receive reports.
Motion to receive the reports from Commissioner Richard Lindvall.
Second.
Second by Commissioners Fleming-Alamine and Don Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We have three items that got added through the process. Item 29 is a resolution naming September 2021 as Preparedness Month in Forsyth County. And I believe we're going to have a presentation. I know August Vernon is here at least acknowledging, except the.
Okay.
Motion?
Come on up, August.
This is a special occasion.
Thank you for being here. I have to read without my mask. Resolution naming September 2021 as Preparedness Month in Forsyth County, North Carolina. Whereas National Preparedness Month is an observant, each observance each September to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. Whereas counties throughout North Carolina have been affected by a variety of emergencies, including mudslides, wildfires, flooding earthquakes, and the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas in 2020, the state of North Carolina experienced 20, excuse me, 48 tornado touchdowns, 247 flood incidents, and 609 severe thunderstorms with damaging wind and hail, all of which resulted in more than 27.5 million in damages statewide. Whereas the peak period of hurricane season is historically mid-August through October and September 10th marks the peak of hurricane, hurricane season. Whereas on Saturday, August 14th, 2021, Brunswick County Commissioner and North Carolina Association of County Commissioners President Frank Williams announced the quote, "100 Counties Prepared" unquote initiative. Whereas the 100 Counties Prepared Initiative will focus on training county commissioners on how to effectively lead during emergencies, compiling resources to assist commissioners during emergency situations, and helping commissioners establish relationships with key emergency management partners. Whereas the 2021 theme of National Preparedness Month is Prepare to Protect. Preparing for disasters is protecting everyone you love. Whereas National Preparedness Month is aimed at encouraging citizens to develop an emergency plan, build an emergency kit, and take other proactive steps to prepare for potential emergencies. And whereas the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners desires that every household, property owner, and business in Forsyth County be prepared for professional emergencies. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes September 2021 as Preparedness Month in Forsyth County and encourages all citizens to prepare to partner their loved ones by developing an emergency plan, building an emergency kit, and communicating their emergency plan to all members of their household and or workplace. I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now you can tell us what we voted on. You can give us your name and address just for the record.
And here's a man.
Yes, sir.
Going to tell us about it. This is your official card.
Thank you. It's official now. Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'll keep this quick and see if I can figure out how to do this.
There you go.
I apologize for the delay because.
You're doing a great job.
I don't want to mess it up. All right, there we go. Again, Chairman, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to be here. We greatly appreciate the resolution adopting September as Disaster Preparedness Month in Forsyth County. This is actually a great tool to help us in our continuing efforts to educate and prepare our communities for the wide variety of disasters that occur. Obviously, the last 18 months have been very challenging in Forsyth County. We've seen everything from COVID-19 to floods to hurricanes, winter weather, other natural hazards and man-made events, as we call them, all the way up to including an earthquake tremor. So there's obviously been a lot going on. The Office of Emergency Management continuously encourages residents and businesses to review and discuss their emergency plans and update their emergency supply kits. Emergencies can happen at any time and are often not predictable. Whether it's a man-made emergency or a weather event, residents can prepare by making family emergency plan and having an emergency supply kit. And one of the key things is just talking about what you're going to do and knowing what you're going to do in case of an emergency. So again, we want to encourage residents, schools, business owners to plan and practice routinely what you're going to do in case of a crisis of emergency. As mentioned in the resolution, the three key areas of disaster planning include prepare a plan, have a kit, and stay informed. And again, we are always available to the public, different groups, to do presentations. We'll do in-person presentations, workshops, virtual meetings, anything we can do to help prepare different groups with disaster preparedness information. I did want to take real quick, because this is an opportunity for public education, to share three sites with you. The first one is called ReadyForsyth. And you can see that site here. We're obviously going through a website upgrade and through that, through our social media, the public can track events that are happening in Forsyth County or the region. Example, when we get weather bulletins from the National Weather Service, we will post those right on there so the public can get a lot of the same information that we get. And that will connect you with local resources, information. Also, the state of North Carolina has a readyandseed.org. And through there, there's a lot of different information, all the way to being able to see which roads are open and closed across the state, access to traffic cameras, and those type of information. And at the federal level, we do have what's called ready.gov, which has a lot of information, everything for kids to pets to businesses on how to plan and prepare for disasters. Probably two key points I want to talk about and I'll finish and take any questions you have. Right now, there's a new term called disaster fatigue that everyone has obviously been dealing with for the past 18 months of, it seems like, continuous crisis, emergencies, and disasters, both within the United States. disasters, both within the United States and internationally, with COVID still occurring. So certainly, we don't want people to lose focus and interest in disaster preparedness. Other events are still happening. My family is from Houston, Texas, and they just went through another hurricane just within the past week. And also, in any incident, we've seen a lot of this in COVID-19 and other recent events, certainly encourage the public to maybe be careful about where you're getting your information. Make sure you find trusted and reliable sources of information. And social media may sometimes provide that, and it may sometimes not provide that. In fact, at the beginning of COVID-19, we had to do what was called Mythbusters to try to address a lot of the false rumors and inaccurate information, so. So again, we're always welcome and willing to help any organization or group with information about preparedness information, and we appreciate you guys adopting this program. In fact, we beat Guilford County, I believe they're adopting it tonight, so we were able to do it before them. But do you have any questions or anything I can answer?
Questions or comments?
Appreciate your work you do.
Thank you very much.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you, August.
Thank you.
Agenda item thirty was added after a closed session last week. It's a resolution adjusting the compensation of the County Tax Assessor Collector.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Richard Lindvall.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Don Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then the last item we added literally yesterday, it's an amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget ordinance to appropriate supplemental links allocation to the Forsyth County Department of Social Services. Turn it over to Kyle Wolf to review this.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As Dudley said, we found out about this yesterday, or added it yesterday. So DSS has received notification from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services that it will be receiving supplemental funding of eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars for the John H. Chaffee Foster Care Program for successful transition to adulthood through its links allocation. These funds can be used to provide unrestricted one-time financial assistance to youth and young adults to assist them in meeting their needs during the COVID-19 pandemic. In order to use the funds these ways, they have to be spent by September thirtieth, which is why we're rushing this agenda in today. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I believe John Thacker is also on the line if you have any programmatic questions about it.
Questions or comments?
I guess, what is sort of the plan, just spend it in the next twenty days, fifteen days?
So, my understanding, is John on the phone, or, John?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. What's the plan on spending it?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. We received notice of these funds available, availability on September the tenth, and so we've been working diligently with our young adults to formulate a plan for distribution. In part, all young adults aged eighteen through twenty-six who have been in the foster care system. Our staff have been reaching out to them by way of telephone, email, to notify them of these available funds. And from that point, we will document them on a spreadsheet, document the distribution to them, and get checks cut and in the mail to them as quickly as possible.
Wow. Wow. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Need to vote.
And that's it.
I'll vote on, need to vote on it.
Oh, sorry. Motion to approve. Good. Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamene. Second by Commissioner Don Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay.
Yeah, and I guess the one thing I would add is, don't be surprised if we see more of these with real short fuses on them, and this was a federal fiscal, fiscal year-end condition, I believe, and, you know, if you don't lose it, you don't spend it, or don't get it to budget, you don't, you lose it. But I do expect to see more of this, particularly with COVID dollars, because a lot of it has gone to the state. The state hangs on to it for a bit, might realize that they're not going to be able to spend it, or somebody else turns dollars in. My suspicion is you'll see that toward the end of JCPC dollars and some other, some other programs like that through the year, so. And I think from a policy perspective, I've talked to most everybody, y'all want us to walk these in if it means leaving state or federal dollars on the table.
Absolutely.
Okay. Just want to make sure I thought that I was understanding that correctly, but sometimes, you know, staff feels a little bit funny about running, calling me and saying, oh, didn't I miss the deadline, or so on and so forth, and we don't want them to miss the deadline if they knew it, but if it's trying to take advantage of something that we would otherwise forego for the citizens, I think we want to make sure that we're going to do the right thing. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, I have some good news. We just completed one hour, forty-nine minutes and thirty seconds of the motion and approval type process. We voted. That's all over, but you can't go home. We're coming back with fifteen items on a briefing session for the October seventh meeting. So stand by, we're going to have loads of fun, and that should get started around four o'clock. Right now, it's eleven minutes till four Eastern daylight time. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Can we have a point of privilege, please, before we adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Also, in Wilmington at the County Commissioners Convention, we had a local commissioner who was awarded the Frederick Douglass Leadership Award. It's Commissioner Carolyn Coleman from Guilford County, but she was given that award because of her decades of leadership and civic engagement in the community, and I want to bring that to attention.
Very good. Motion to approve? A motion to approve. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Fleming Elamene. I'll second the motion. We're adjourned, back at four o'clock.